All right, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, November 9th, 2022 meeting of the Fall River Planning Board, pursuant to the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for such public comment. We have adopted such a policy which in short provides for citizen input on the planning board, specific matters at the end of the meeting. There is a sign up sheet that is located at the back of the room for anyone who is interested in making any comments. I'm going to have a road call. Gloria Pacico.
Present.
Mario Luciolo.
Here.
Beth Andrey.
Here.
And myself, John Ferrera, here. Also acknowledge Planning Board Secretary Nina Kruger and Dan Aggar, City Engineer. All right, first, under new business, first item on the agenda is roadway reconstruction on Wood Street. Section 66-185, City Ordinance, considering the roadway reconstruction plan and profile of Wood Street extension.
Is there anybody here?
Yeah, there's a few people right here.
No, but that's, so FHT who submitted it. I don't think there's anybody here representing them to give a presentation. So what I would offer is that, why don't you let me give you my report first, and then we can take any other comments.
Then I'll open it up if somebody has comments.
So when each of your packets, you should have a memo from the engineering department stating to the Fall River Planning Board, from Daniel Aggar, City Engineer, date November 9th, 2022, regarding proposed Wood Street extension roadway reconstruction. Upon review of the submitted roadway reconstruction plan, the engineering department and the Department of Community Utilities offer the following comments. The plan shall illustrate the legal status for this portion of Wood Street. Does the public way status to the east extend to Preston Street? Number two, the plan proposes no stormwater runoff mitigation. The applicant shall propose drainage improvements to ensure that there will be no negative impacts to adjacent and abutting properties. The applicant shall provide drainage calculations for the existing and proposed condition. The plan shall illustrate topography for the first 25 feet of the parcels north of Wood Street and within 100 feet of the Preston Street intersection. The applicant shall label the size and type of all utilities within the right of way. All existing and proposed utilities shall be shown on the roadway profile. Provide the location of the nearest fire hydrant. A new hydrant may be required. What is the width of adjacent pavement on Preston Street? Nine, a leveling area at the Preston Street intersection shall be required. 10, a list of waivers from the Planning Board Rules and Regulations shall be submitted. There appears to be an errant line running parallel with the northerly sideline of Wood Street. 12, it appears that the proposed roadway surface is offset. We assume this is intentional to align with the existing traveled way of Wood Street to the west. Please correct the typical cross section to reflect this. The engineering department and the Department of Community Utilities deserves the right for additional comment upon the receipt of revised plans. So, since FHT is not here this evening, I will forward this to them tomorrow. So that their engineer can make the modifications that I've requested, if you chose to do so. So what you would have to do is...
With no action taken today.
What you'll do after you take public comment is decide whether to table the matter, approve the matter, and then request that this letter be sent to the applicant.
Is there any comments here from the public on this? Please just give us your name and address, please.
Steven Martins, 936 Wood Street. Just a couple of questions in regards, A, Mr. Aggar, would that be available to me, what you just read?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy today if you would like.
Thank you. I live directly in front of the proposed street. My property faces the street and also faces the two lots that are going to be developed. As the road runs now, there's nothing there. There was some site work done by Century to put in some utility water lines and whatnot. The street does pitch quite a bit. It is not elevated properly. And then there's some erosion control and there's a guardrail at the end. What are they specifically going to use for the erosion control at the end of the pavement in the guardrail when it's controlled?
Normally, we would require hay bales and silt fence or wattles. In a situation like this where the topography is so severe, I would require them to put staked hay bales and silt fence. And we would also require them to extend that further up the lot lines than what they have proposed.
And then obviously behind that, there is some trees there now. Would there be any ability for them to conserve trees? Or is that all coming down?
No, so they would not be touching the portion of Wood Street beyond where they have proposed. Have you seen the plan?
I haven't yet.
Okay, so from where the erosion control line is, they would not be touching that heading east. So whatever is there now, is there now. Unless, through their proposal for drainage improvement, they decide to do, or need the room to do something else. I don't know what they're going to propose. We don't design it for them. We just tell them that they need to do something to improve the situation.
Because currently now, when there is a large storm, the water comes down because everything, all that water runs towards the pond because it's a natural pit. Once it hits that tree line, half the water goes to the right, to the proposed build blocks, and half comes kind of, well, it's not my property, but the sidewalk that goes across the front and runs down. So would the hay bales have to stay there?
Well, no, so what will happen is, the hay bales are during construction. What we're requiring them to do is propose some drainage improvements. Now what those may be, it might be a riprap trench at the end of the road, so the water flows into that and doesn't disperse, and then spills over properly. So there are a number of different drainage improvements that they can propose to ensure that we don't have a runoff problem beyond what's already there now. So until they come back with something, I don't know what they'll propose. But at that time, you know, that'll be reviewed and of course you'll be able to...
Situation's fluid.
Yes, absolutely.
Because obviously, the topography of the road, I saw the pitch and it's going to have a burn. But looking at it from where my property is leveled, it looks like the road would be higher than my property level.
So right now, what they have shown is that the road is just about to follow what's there. But if you heard in my comments, I've asked them to show us what the topography is on your lot specifically, so that we can determine, are you high or are you lower? Could you be affected by this?
Because my concern is where the water runs off and there's a big storm, puddles in my front yard.
Absolutely, yeah. So we want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Because the topography is the worst where Preston Street right now currently ends, and that road starts from there to kind of down. It's like almost like a two-foot drop very quickly. And then it kind of, it's a gradual thing. So they would have to level that off.
Yeah, I think it starts even on their plan at about a 7% slope, and then it flattens out to about a 4.5% slope. So we've asked them to take a look at that. And what we're charged with is to make sure that you don't have any issues with stormwater. That's really the biggest thing.
Obviously, they're not going to open the street there because of pitches, but there's no proposed to open Preston Street.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. That's one of the major concerns that I had. And I read the plan where even after construction, if there are issues, they're responsible to come back.
That's always not so easy, though.
Oh, I know, that's why, that's why I heard about tabling it or how we're going to do it, just so that way it kind of stays fluid. So they can stake it out. I know that there were supposed to be more neighbors to come and maybe voice their concerns on the other side of the Wood Street where the rest of the water, because it does.
I did get a call from someone down gradient, and they called, and they wanted, but their primary concern was that it was not going to connect.
Yeah, so that, and you can see that in the plans, but when there's a lot of runoff, just so you know, because I've obviously been there for 20 years. On that side of Wood Street that is developed, it's so bad that that becomes like a sheet of ice in the winter because the rain and the water, and then it refreezes. And like the neighbor that's on the side of that lot there, when he comes out of the driveway, it's just a sheet of ice. So now, there's not going to be any trees or any natural drainage. It's just going to come running. So a lot of the concerns were what happens to the water after that time. I know there's no one here to speak for that, but that was the concerns that I had voiced to me.
Anyone else? Oh, you, for that as well? All right, thank you, Mr. Martins.
Just for the record, are you in the butter? Or are you close by?
I'm on 906 Wood Street.
All right, you might just, yeah, just take those addresses down just so you know that they did come, but they, comments that were already presented cover their concerns, but they were here.
All right, what is the pleasure of the board, seeing that there's still some unanswered questions here, and they're not here to represent? Would the board like to table?
I make a motion to table, to give the petitioners a chance to reply or give answered Dan Aggar's legitimate concerns, which has several of them, in a very nicely typed up memo. And then we can better evaluate it. That's my motion.
I'll second, I'm motion.
Mr. Gloria, I made a motion. Mario, second. All in favor, Gloria?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
And I, as well. We'll put it for December.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Next item under new business, street acceptance for Courtney Street. Request acceptance of Courtney Street extending from Highland Ave. To Fieldstone Lane, deferred by City Council on October 11th, 2022.
So as you all know, in the past, you've dealt with these. The city council, when they receive, or when the clerk receives a petition from a number of residents in the city, goes through the process of going through the clerk, gets sent down to the council. The council then orders it to the planning board for opinion. So that's where we're at this evening, is that we're just asking, or they're just asking for a recommendation from the board. A little bit of back history on this section of Courtney Street. You may recall during the approval of the Highland Farms 2 subdivision required a number of improvements to be made in Courtney Street. And there was actually a lengthy Courtney Street agreement with the developers of what they were supposed to do. They can't do what they need to do until they have the legal rights to make all of these improvements. So the initiation of this acceptance will then allow us, being the owner of the street, to provide the ability for the developer to continue on and make the improvements that was reviewed by the planning board and part of their approval during the definitive subdivision approval process. So again, right, you are not accepting the way. You are just making a recommendation to the city council to accept the way, and that way improvements can be made. The way as it currently exists is satisfactory. It's a paved street. It provides access to Royal Crest Apartments, as well as the Highland Woods subdivision. But as the, through the definitive subdivision process, you all felt that it was required to make more improvements, adding some sidewalks, new curbing, new lighting for the entire length of Courtney Street, and make some improvements at the Highland Avenue intersection. Being a private way and having some encroachments in the way from some of the abutting properties, the applicant and owner of the subdivision didn't have the legal rights to go make these improvements. So this will, this brings it to that next step, giving him the ability to go do that.
Okay.
Question to Dan. Courtney Street brings memory. Courtney Street bringing to me memory. If we send this to approval, our, is, what else is to actually continue to prevent, to remain the way it is, or make an adjustment that was never made before?
So, well, so there is, as I stated, a lengthy agreement executed by the developer, I think it's 13, 13 pages, executed by the mayor, the developer, the law department, and in that details what you all required them to make for improvements in Courtney Street. So this agreement is in place. The first step is them having the ability to go make the improvements. So this would be that first step. And then, so they are bound by this agreement to go make those improvements. And a certain number of homes and home sales are being held, and there's a surety in place, performance guarantee for the construction of these ways with the city as well. So if they don't go do it, we have the ability to pull their performance bond and go build it ourselves.
Okay, and the motion you request, the words, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So all you need to do is just, if you choose, make a motion to recommend the acceptance of the way to the city council.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions first, before we make a motion?
I make a motion to stand to accept it to, and send it to the city council.
Recommendations.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, okay.
I'll second that.
And Beth's second. All in favor? And myself, aye. Okay, number three, a Form A application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval, A and R plan. File number 22-1542, order Fall River Redevelopment Authority, applicant VMD Companies LLC. Property location Zero Innovation Way. Assesses map W-19-0185 and 0189. Saggar?
I'll let Mr. Dan give his presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Dunn. I'm a principal of the engineering firm, MBL Land Development and Permitting, with offices at 5 Bristol Drive in southeast Mass. We're here on behalf of VMD, as well as the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, and on the parcel of land that's currently owned by the Fall River Redevelopment Authority on Zero Innovation Way. It's our intent to subdivide the property into four individual lots to proceed with site plan approval for each lot. And each lot is going to have a building on it with their own separate drainage, as you may have heard when Mr. Aggar, the city engineer, first came in. We were talking about updating the drainage design. So we're in the process of doing that. We have an order of conditions from the city of Fall River, as well as the town of Freetown. We currently have planning board approval in the town of Freetown as well, with some special conditions that we address the peer review consultants' information, as well as the city engineers' consult, city engineers' comments in regards to drainage. So we're asking for you to review and approve and endorse the A and R plan for this Form A subdivision. Mr. Chairman.
Sure, so although the plan looks very intimidating, there is a lot of ink on this. It's for a number of reasons. It's a very large piece of land. They're creating very large parcels. This is in a general use, science and technology overlay district, zoning district in Freetown and in the city of Fall River. It's located in the industrial park district, where the requirements are 100 feet of frontage and 10,000 square feet. So they're creating four lots and one parcel in the city of Fall River. The minimum lot size is, buildable lots anyway, 709,000 square feet with 986 feet of frontage. So they're very large lots. What you'll notice on here is that there is a parcel lot 5, which is actually a conservation restriction parcel. So it does not have any legal frontage. And that note is added to the plan that this is not a buildable portion. So there's a conservation restriction that covers the wetland portion of this site. So they'll be creating these individual building lots so that individual buildings, parking areas, and drainage systems can be constructed later on. But for your review tonight, you're simply looking at area and frontage, which this plan far exceeds any of those requirements.
And if I may further, that conservation restriction, the intent, also part of the intent of this plan is to combine all of the area of the conservation restriction into one lot, because as part of the agreement with the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, and is to create one lot that cannot be further conveyed to anybody at any single time. So that includes our abutting, the Hutchison's LLC, parcel of land that has the conservation restriction on it, as well as the conservation restriction that's also in Fall River. So we're talking about approximately 52 acres of land that's in a conservation restriction to, you know, help promote the protection of the environment, as well as, you know, make sure that that area of land is perpetually maintained. We're about to set bounds as part of that. Conservation restriction is required with the MESA process and the natural heritage process. So we're, you know, we're, I think we're in good shape. The rest of the land, it's about 143, 143,000 square feet of land.
So they're saving the trails.
Yeah, so if you look at, the other thing that's part of that conservation restriction is that 52 acres, we cannot even use the 52 acres as part of our open space or any part of our development area.
And I noticed you maintained it off the road as well.
That's correct, yes.
For the frontage. All right, any questions from the board?
Anything that sounds good to me.
Do I have a motion to accept the A and R, as presented?
I'll motion to accept the A and R.
Beth Andrey made a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Gloria, second. All in favor, Gloria?
Aye.
Mario?
Yes.
Beth? And I, yes, as well. Thank you for coming.
You want to sign the plan for me so I can take it? Or where is that?
No, I want to be able to scan it in tomorrow, the signed version.
The signed version, okay. I was going to do that anyways. If you want to do that, perfectly fine. And then I can come back tomorrow and pick it up.
Yeah, tomorrow, okay.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You have to decide, correct?
Yes.
Cindy, you have to come and sign it?
No, well, Cindy can come in, or you all can sign it tonight. I don't know if Cindy's available to come in and sign it tomorrow.
Okay, so why don't we just sign it tonight?
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, number four, receipt of correspondence. Review and discussion of the nomination of S. Gors and Sons Block for the National Register of Historic Places from the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
I would recommend, and I'll ask Nina this. It references, I'll just read this. Enclosed, please find the following nomination form. Was there a nomination form with this?
That was the only thing in the envelope.
Okay, so what I would recommend is that you just table this for the time being, and let us find out what that nomination form was. Just, I just want to make sure that it isn't something that you should all be somewhat concerned about.
Do I have a motion to table?
I motion.
Motion by Mario, second.
Second.
Second by Beth. All in favor, Gloria?
Aye.
Aye.
Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
And myself, as well, yes. All right, discussion. Review and discussion, review and discuss updated fee schedule and 2023 planning board meeting schedule. I believe we all have the fee schedule, old and new.
So as the chairman stated, you'll see the two different fee schedules. One that's been historically around, I've got to guess, for probably 20 years. I was unable to find the exact date. So to be in keeping with some of the abutting municipalities, we wanted to propose the ability to increase some of these fees. The proposed schedule that you have, which is the white sheet of paper, is something that I put together after reviewing again all of the adjacent municipalities and what their fees are for the different types of applications that we accept. So we can have a discussion about it. It can be tabled. You can do your own research to get a better understanding of where you're at. We just wanted to start the process in having a discussion with regards to the potential raising of some of these fees, again, to be in accordance with adjacent municipalities. Everything goes up, cost of paper, cost of printing, you know, employees, everything. So a moderate increase to some of these fees, I think, is in keeping with normal practice. But by all means, you're the board, you have to vote for it. So what I would suggest is that, rather than get into a conversation that's too deep without having looked into some of the abutting things, or if you need any additional information, email me and I can respond. But if you do want to have a preliminary discussion, by all means, go ahead.
I know that Mr. Pacigo had some questions.
I'd like to do some more research on it.
He wants to do more research.
Quick question. This is applicable to both residential and commercial, same exact fee schedule?
Yes, yeah, so I mean, an A and R plan is an A and R plan, like this one. It could be a multi-billion dollar development, or it could be a house lot. When you get to Form Cs, those are the definitive subdivisions that do require a great amount of review. Our old fees are really antiquated. And it's impossible to review these to the level that you deserve them to be reviewed for the amount of money that does come in. So again, the only issue I, or question I had with regards to the site plan review, it's actually not, I don't believe, the purview of the planning board. It's the city ordinance, but it does show up on your fee schedule. So I'm going to look into that portion of it through site plan review. I don't know, because the planning board does not govern site plan review. It's a site plan review committee of five different departments in the city. But as you can see, on the historic version of the site plan review application, it does show up there, so I did include it. But this will also give me the opportunity to go find out that. And if it doesn't belong here, then we will be taking it off.
So do I have a motion to table until we get further clarification? And maybe the members have a chance to look at it a little more detail? And Dan can clarify that site plan review? If that's how the board wants to go?
I don't know. I would make the motion that I need more time to review these fees, but, and I can be outvoted, so that's my motion.
Well, Mr. Aggar still has to...
Yeah, no, I think it'd be good for you to go and, and if you want to take the time to go look at, you know, how we compare.
And I may be emailing you, Dan.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so you make a motion to table?
For next meeting, yes, please.
I'll second.
Mario, second. All in favor, Gloria?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
And yes, for myself, as well. We have approval of the minutes from...
Nope.
Oh, no, the schedule, the second, part two. We have the meeting scheduled here for 2023. Do I have a motion to approve this? Does it look good for everybody, or?
I mean, as you know, I mean, it's basically set the same way that every other year does. There will be meetings that either need to be changed or you can't attend, but so that we can have at least a framework so that people can work off throughout the year.
And some could be canceled if we don't have enough.
Sure, absolutely.
So do I have a motion to accept the meeting schedule?
I have a motion to accept the meeting schedule.
Motion made by Beth, second.
I'll second the motion.
Gloria, second. All in favor, Gloria?
Aye.
Mario?
Gloria, second.
Yeah.
Point of correction. Okay, yes, yes.
Mario and Beth, and myself, yes. Okay, now we go to approval of the minutes of the meeting from the last, from the last meeting for October 17th. Everybody has a copy. I can't vote on this, I was absent.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mario, second.
I'll second.
Beth, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye. Yes.
And I abstain. We got no citizens input for tonight? Have we got no citizens input for tonight? We just had a little bit.
Before you move to adjourn, I just want to raise something informally. As some of you know, John has served as the planning board's representative to the CPC. Very well representing the, the planning board. He's decided to step down from that and has submitted a resignation letter. The process is that we need to provide a new member to sit on the CPC. And it does require some time, as John will, will tell you. If, if no one wants to take on or accept that role, it will fall on the chairman most likely or not provide one at all, which is not a good thing. We're looking into what the actual requirements are. So it is requested that, that we do have one. So no discussion tonight, just keep it in your mind. If it's something that you might be interested in doing, it's a very important role. You can speak with John. The two of you discussing the matter is not a quorum, so not to worry if you want to get in that ear.
It's mostly so that they have a quorum as well.
Exactly, so if anybody has an interest in doing that, just give it some thought. Cindy's not here tonight. We will put it on the agenda for December's meeting to have a formal discussion about it. And only because I know that the CPC has a number of items coming through very soon that, that needs votes and they're concerned about not having a quorum as well. So I think if we resolve it with a potential vote at the December meeting, I think that would give them adequate time.
It's a great board. You know, it's, everybody comes before you looking for some, some funds to be allocated either for open space, preservation, historical. And, you know, it's just the biggest part, it's a certain part of the year when they're allocating the funds, that takes a little bit of time. The rest of the year is, is, is pretty slow. But it's, you know, doing your due diligence and looking through the packets. You have meetings where you go into discussion on each item anyway and try to give it a little bit of balance. And then there's a scoring sheet after all of that is done and you hear from the petitioners, a score sheet to see, you know, who you think won first, second, third, fourth. And then you combine all the score sheets and, and try to decipher who's who. Some have already been allocated funds in the past, have never used them. So that's kind of like a, a little deterrent. It's like, well, we've already given you money, but you've never used it. So, you know, that could go to somewhere else and it could go from anywhere from rehabbing a historical building, preservation. We got the Ice House up in Watapa. We just approved lights for, for Father Kelly after we did last year 400,000 for, I believe it was 400,000 for Maplewood Park for baseball. So it's, it's a lot of good, good things. It's just trying to pick, pick and choose. I know Water Street and a lot have put in and it's, it's just trying to figure out the, the priority because you only get so much money to allocate.
How many members are on the board, John?
I want to say this, one, two, three, six. I'll say the six.
And there are members from the Historic Commission.
Correct. The same thing happened with housing. Housing did not have a representative to, to community preservation. So what happened was Boston came down and said, well, one way that we found that works very well is to tell each board that, that isn't supplying a member, that, okay, if you can't, if nobody volunteers, then we're going to make the chairman the, the representative. So now the chairman's sitting back, well, I don't want to be the, so now they.
And maybe not show up at any of the meetings or not want to. Not, not that Cindy wouldn't, but, you know, if it's not something that she's interested in.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's good responsibility. It's, like I said, there's a certain time of year that when we're trying to decipher, you know, who, who should get the money.
Who doesn't like, who doesn't like to give money? You can be sentimental, so whatever you want.
I like to give money too, but it was, again, there's a lot of good projects. I mean, with the, the bell towers, moving the bell towers was one. I mean, it's the stuff that comes up, it's like, you don't even realize.
We utilize a lot of the funds in the planning department as well. There are, there are many initiatives that, that we seek funds from.
Yeah, the city will, will ask for money. Paul Furling with Water and Sewer will ask for money for a pumping station or to allocate something. I know the Notre Dame Rectory, they were going to put $4 million. The folks who owned it into restoration and renovation. And they were seeking like, I believe it was like 300 just for the elevator.
Yeah.
So, you know, to me it was like, listen, he's, it's a young couple. They're going to put in, you know, they're going to go out on a limb for five, $6 million. You know, $300,000 is a small, small number to try to at least help them out a little bit. So it's a lot of stuff like that.
Just for point of information, I served the first one.
Oh, you did?
Three years. Very interesting.
So it's someone else's turn is what you're saying? That's a nice way of saying, no, thank you, but.
No, 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 but I'm saying it's very interesting and I nominated John.
Again.
So.
Yeah, he nominated me last time.
Well, we'll keep that in mind, so at the December meeting.
No, seriously, I, you know, that time was, I just could not handle so much going on in my life. But I've been there, I've done that. It's very interesting. Sometimes disappointed, sometimes very glad to do it and be part of it.
Yeah.
So to my colleague, yes, if you have a time, please do it. Don't blame me for a few.
All right, Beth, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Beth makes a motion to adjourn, second.
I second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go, thank you all very much.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
Good work.